Let's pray. Lord God, we come to you today and we gather together because of our love for the city of Erlanger. Lord, I pray it be not just a love for the boundaries and the lines and the property that we have, but a love for the people that are citizens of this city. Lord, I pray for us as citizens that you would help us to be willing to obey the governing authorities that you have put above us. Lord, I pray for this governing body here today, this city council, as they make decisions, that they would be decisions full of wisdom and discernment, that they would be decisions that are made not out of selfish ambition, but decisions that are made out of a love for the people and a desire to see their well-being and to care for them, to provide for them a city that they can raise their children in, that they can grow and retire in. Lord, I just thank you for the many changes that continually come to our city, to other cities in the county and around northern Kentucky. Lord, just continue to watch over us, protect us, and provide us with the knowledge that we need to be able to make decisions to lead us into the future. Lord, I pray for Mayor Hermes that you would just continue to watch over him, giving him the knowledge and the skill that he needs to hold the office that he does, that he would honor you and glorify you in what he does. And Lord, I pray today that through this meeting you would be honored and glorified in all that goes on, for it is in the name of my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ that I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Townsend. All right, I now call the August 4th, 2015 regular meeting of the city council of Erlanger to order. Please rise and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask Mrs. Hoffman to take roll call.
Mr. Meyer?
Present.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Here.
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Oh, here. Sorry.
Ms. Pitts?
Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Ms. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Blankenship?
Here.
Mr. Howard?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. You've received a copy of the minutes for the July 7th, 2015 regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Motion by Mr. Blankenship, seconded by Mr. Burke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, next up here, we've got the approval of the agenda for this evening. You've received a copy of the agenda, and I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented. Motion by Ms. Kyle, seconded by Ms. Skidmore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. All right, special presentations. First one, we've got a proclamation. Some of you may or may not realize we have an Olympian in our presence tonight. We've got Ms. Danielle Blakeney here. I've got a proclamation to read for you. Would you mind standing up to be recognized? All right, thank you. All right, so to whom, to all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas Danielle Blakeney, a Boone County High School graduate, is a distinguished special Olympian who has achieved great success. And whereas Ms. Blakeney won the gold medal in her division of the rhythmic gymnastics all-around competition at the World Summer Games four years ago in Athens, Greece. In addition to two more gold medals, a silver and a bronze medal in individual events. And whereas Ms. Blakeney traveled this summer to Los Angeles, California, to once again compete in the World Summer Games and represent herself, her team, and her division. And whereas Ms. Blakeney was victorious, winning gold in the all-around rhythmic gymnastics, ball routine competition, and group ball competition. She also earned the silver medal in ribbon, bronze medal in clubs, and placed fifth in hoops. And whereas Ms. Blakeney is a role model for athletes worldwide, proving that hard work and determination builds character in champions. And whereas, the city of Erlanger congratulates Ms. Blakeney on these admirable accomplishments and commends her perseverance to achieve her goals. Now therefore, I, Tyson Hermes, Mayor of the city of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim August 5th, 2015, tomorrow, to be Danielle Blakeney Day in Erlanger, and do commend this observance to all our citizens given under my hand and the seal of the city of Erlanger on this fourth day of August, 2015.
Wow.
Unbelievable.
This is for later on this month. Figures it's the day I have kind of a frog in my throat, so thanks for putting up here. I have all the reading to do. The World Overdose Prevention Day. Okay, again, to all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas, the city of Erlanger stands firmly committed to raising the awareness of prescription drugs, opioid, and heroin overdose, as evidenced by the Centers of Disease Control and Preventions, the CDC. Recent report confirming that deaths from heroin in the United States have quadrupled since 2002. And whereas, the CDC also reports that the number of overdose deaths in 2013 was 8,200 with an annual adjusted rate. And whereas, the number of overdose deaths from heroin in Kentucky have increased 61% from 2013 to 2014. And whereas, in 2014, Kentucky led the nation in overdose deaths. And whereas, the number of heroin overdoses treated in St. Elizabeth Healthcare has increased from two per day to an average of three per day in 2015. And whereas, interveningest drug use is directly responsible for spreading hepatitis B, hepatitis C, HIV, syphilis, and other diseases. And the discarded needles in our parks, parking lots, and roadways pose a health threat to our citizens, especially children. And whereas, the cost to treat babies born to mothers addicted to prescription drugs, including heroin, at St. Elizabeth Healthcare, is approaching one-quarter of a million dollars a year, with unknown quality of life consequences for these children, and with a potential long-term burden to society. And whereas, the cost of incarceration is estimated to be three times the cost of treatment. Therefore, be it resolved, the city of Erlanger calls on the citizens of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, to assure that each citizen is aware of prescription drugs and heroin overdose, along with the consequences of opioid substance use disorders to the individual, their family, and our community. Now be it further resolved, I Tyson Hermes, Mayor of the city of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2015, to be overdose prevention day in Erlanger, and recommits our community to engage in programs and activities to make Erlanger citizens healthier, happier, and substance abuse free, given under my hand and the seal of the city of Erlanger on this fourth day of August, 2015. All right. Next on the agenda is the mayor's report. We celebrated a birthday this past week for our council members. Ms. Sudcamp, what does it feel like to be 50 years old?
Yeah, for the fourth time. This is the perfect lead-in, everybody, because I publicly want to thank the mayor and council and admin and every member of my Erlanger family that gave me the surprise of my life on my 70th birthday with the surprise celebration. Now, I almost killed the mayor, I'll be honest with you.
It's not the first time.
No, it wasn't the first time. He called me and sent me a text and said that we were having an emergency meeting of the police department to discuss personnel. Now, after all that's been going on in the world, I'm thinking, oh my God, what has happened? What has happened? So, I think all for that. It was a thrill of my life, and it was wonderful. Thank you all so much.
You're welcome. Great to see your surprise. Let's see, I wanted to catch everybody up on the Underpass painting. I'm not sure if everybody's heard this or not, but as you may be aware, a few months back, we applied for a grant to help fund the Underpass painting. We were not successful in that grant, so we are pursuing other options. We are still pursuing the project. And Mr. Gatlin and myself have been reviewing a contract with Norfolk Southern to proceed with that work. I'll keep you abreast on that. Over the weekend, I got an email from Brandon Baldoni with the Kenton County Library. A few months back, I think a few of you may have heard that the city of Cincinnati was getting a 3D printer that was in the paper. And shortly after that, then I got a lot of requests via email that Erlanger considered the same. We had a meeting with Kenton County Library there at the Erlanger branch, and they said there was a lot of issues to review with that, a lot of policy that would have to be created to do something like that. But he informed me over the weekend that they had in fact purchased a 3D printer, and they are working on getting it up and running and developing the policies to be able to let the public use it. So that's a big deal. And then the last thing, I had Sherri distribute a copy of a letter from the Florence Elks to everybody. There's a celebration, or I shouldn't say celebration, but a memorial on September 11th. Just wanted to let you guys know about it, see if you would be interested in attending that. So that concludes my report. We'll move on to the reports of committees. Public safety, police, Ms. Sudcamp, Mr. Kyle?
Okay. At our committee meeting on July 21st, we discussed the towing franchise, and I believe that we considered rebidding that. So that's what I have to report on that. And I don't know if we have to make a formal decision tonight, or if we're just... We talked about rebidding that.
Yeah, we talked about two different options. One was rebidding and one was doing a memorandum of...
I don't know if we need to discuss that tonight, what everybody wants to do, or...
I thought we made a decision not to rebid it. I thought we made a decision to go ahead and continue with the one we have.
I don't remember that we actually made a decision, but we discussed both options. And I don't think we actually came up with a decision yet, so it's still kind of open. That's what we need to decide, what we want to do. And unfortunately, the chief's not here this evening, so...
Good to say, we have some meetings scheduled for this Thursday with the Chief of Police and some of those, so it's according to what this council decides to do right now, so I would like some direction about where we're going. So please decide whether we're going to go along and try to renegotiate some contract or we're going to do a rebidding, so we know where to go Thursday morning when we start having these discussions.
Yeah, what does everybody want to do, because...
My feeling is we've got someone in the city of Erlanger who's giving us a decent price on towing, and if we go outside this city to try to get someone, we're going to lose the time that we get them to be on time. Our police department's working real well with this guy, and I'm sure we've had some headaches with him, but they're working them out. But I can't see us going outside getting someone else, because it's expensive. If you go with AAA or something like that, you don't know where that towing company's going to come from. They can come from Ohio, Indiana. We had one come from Indiana to come and tow my wife's car with AAA. And I thought, are you kidding me? With all the towing companies in northern Kentucky? But my recommendation is to stay with what we got, because I think we got a good thing going.
Well, and from what I could gather from the information that I received was that the only problem that we had with the towing company was a personality issue. And you're not going to change anybody's personality. I mean, it is what it is. And these people are key to the police department's response. Key to that, and key to public safety. You know, when you've got a big accident out on the expressway, you could be waiting 20 minutes for somebody to show up from Burlington or even further away. So my recommendation would be to stay with them and just, you know, explain to them that these were the concerns that were, you know, brought to us, and see what comes out of that.
Right, and we had discussed some of the charges, I believe, instead of the police department collecting those, that the towing company is going to actually start collecting those. But I agree with both of you that I think if we keep it local... Now, I don't know, do we have to do a bid with him if we're going with him? I mean, because I know we wanted to spell out some things about the charges, how we handle that, or do we just make an agreement?
No, ma'am, I think the advice from our attorney is that we can do that through the contract amendments and getting it done that way.
But it sounds like unless anybody else has anything further to add, that we want to keep what we've got and just iron out some issues with them.
Ms. Skidmore?
Well, yeah, I thought we were trying to work it out with the current company, and if we couldn't work it out, then we were going to put it out for bid. But that's kind of like, so it puts us kind of like in a gray area right now as to what kind of a decision you want to make, because we don't know whether the current company's going to comply with our wishes.
Right. So I think that is how we, I think that's why we have a little bit of confusion, because I think that's how we left it, was that some of the requests that we had were controlling the costs of the towing. We also talked about storage fees and when storage fees would start and how they would accrue. And we did talk about personality. There are some of the benefits that we have with the current company, and that is the response time, and then also the fact that we've had zero incidents of theft from their lot, which is a big benefit.
There were a couple other things, too, that we were requesting.
Was anybody met with the guy?
Those were the main things.
That's what we're looking for, and if it's the direction that, you know, that I took, and I took it the same way that we were going to, Ms. Skidmore just said that we were going to try to go into those negotiations. That's why I set up the meeting for Thursday morning between us all to try to start down that path to see. And then in fact, if not, we can, and we can report back to this council and say yes. That's what I was, that's the assumption that I was working under when I did that. So if it's wrong, then tell me, and I'll go back another way. But if it's not, that's the way.
Find out what he's got to say and bring it back.
Okay. And then we also met about parades and assemblies, street closures, et cetera, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that we decided to go with a permit for parades and I guess things like, I don't know, the races and stuff like that. Anything else, we're not going to formalize.
Yeah, I thought we were going to investigate the permit and look at that as an option, but not necessarily committing to doing that.
Mr. Gatlin and I have been talking about this this week, and he's found some things, so we're working on that to get back with you to make a presentation on those things. But yes, that was good.
Yeah, okay. And the other thing, too, on your agenda this evening, under resolutions, see the FEUPS, or UPS, FEUPS? That stands for Florence, Erlanger, and Elsmere. They're going to do an interlocal agreement. And if you need to ask any questions, we have Sergeant Ranger in the house. I think we all got a copy of that, so you're probably familiar with what I'm talking about. Anybody have any questions?
All the little F-E-E-U-P-P-S stands for Florence, Erlanger, Elsmere Unified Police Protection System. Trying to unify our three cities, not to patrol their areas or anything like that, but if something comes up, we are needed, or if they need us, vice versa, then our guys will be covered with this resolution.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we'll vote on that then later this evening, correct? Is that the first resolution?
Resolution.
It's a resolution.
Because we're all dealing with the same purse and the same problems, you know, just in three different communities.
It only makes sense.
There are no boundaries here with this.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
Basically, it's just an interlocal agreement that will assist us in mostly the heroin issues. It will allow us to communicate with Florence and Elsmere a little easier and give us a little more jurisdiction as far as going to Florence or Florence coming over here to assist.
Is there any intent to look at other neighboring cities?
No.
That's all I have.
Any other questions on that? Okay. Thank you, officer.
I like that.
Going back to the parade and assembly, street closure, is that something that we'll discuss at the committee meeting, the next committee meeting?
Well, I'm not sure when we'll be finished with it, but we've got a lot going on on the 18th, I think that you'll hear later on, if we want to put that issue on there. If not, I don't know that it's pressing to get on there right away.
It's probably getting past the five KCs.
Yeah.
So we'll just report progress on those two items, then?
All right. Wonderful. Thank you, Sergeant.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the fire and EMS. Ms. Skidmore, Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, we just have a brief report here and then an item to read. We had, there was 290 responses for the month, that was 109 fires, or 11 fires, 98 non-fire rescue events, and 138 EMS responses. Ms. Skidmore has an item to read.
I have a thank you note to read. It says, "Many thanks to the firemen of Erlanger at the Narrows Road Station for participating in our parade around the pond at Lakemont. Your presence brought delightful moments, as not only the children, but adults also were able to experience a fire truck and an ambulance up close. We, the handouts were great, and as children heading home, many wore the fire hats on their heads and had smiles on their faces. From each of us in the Lakemont Social Committee and residents, we thank each of you not only for a sunny Sunday afternoon parade, but for your dedication and protection 24/7." This says, "With our gratitude sincerely, Lakemont Social Committee ladies." And the firemen that she listed, that are listed on the thank you note, were Regis Huth, Steve Corey, Joe Kappa, and Elliot Eppen.
Wonderful, thank you. Captain McQuary, do you have anything further to report? All right, thank you. All right, Public Works, Mr. Cahill?
Yeah, we do have a report from the committee meeting on 7/21, and we're looking at a pedestrian path on Nelson Road, thanks to the great work by Mr. Durker. We would like to proceed with a estimate of the cost for funding and engineering of that project for that walkway.
Wonderful. Does that require a vote here tonight? I don't. No, I wouldn't imagine. To seek a price for the engineering, I think, yeah. Okay, we'll proceed with that.
We have a couple more things, though. As you know, the annual Public Works golf outing did occur. I will say that Mr. Bogart was 18-under, that means the number of golf balls he lost. And I would like to give a shout out to Dale Ringer for that, because he is now a grandfather again to Ansley Mae Wilson. She was born on the 28th, so...
Wonderful. All right. Mr. Bogart?
Nothing to ask, just recognizing Mr. Burke for part one. So it's a great asset to our community.
Thank you so much. Wonderful, thank you. All right, then moving on, we'll go to administration. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Burke?
Ask any update on the caboose, when that's leaving? What's the deal?
We're going to meet for max next week, so I don't have time on it.
It is ready to go. Completely cleaned up.
So do you think the caboose would be gone for Heritage Day?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, are there any... Thank you, Mr. Burke. Okay, administration then, Mr. Howard, Ms. Cahill?
Yes, Mayor. On our legislative agendas, we have the codified ordinances on our agenda. We want to go ahead and keep that in committee at this time. It seemed like at our last committee meeting, there was quite a bit of confusion on what recolification was all about. So we've asked, we're asking for a committee meeting on Tuesday, August 18th, to have Mr. Frommell from American Legal come in to give us a little bit of an education what recolification's all about, so... And I have met with him, and I got a good education a couple weeks ago from him, so I appreciate that. So I'm asking the same thing for the city council as well, so...
Wonderful. Okay. All right, we'll put that on the calendar. All right, Ms. Andrews? Do you have any, Ms. Andrews in the house, do you have anything further to report?
Over.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you guys have more?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Go ahead, go ahead, Kathy. There was a moment of silence.
A moment of silence.
Okay. I just want to let everybody know about the upcoming events in August. Thursday is the first one in August at 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., a concert in Flagship Park. Grab a blanket, join us for a rockin' good time with the band Anderson Ferry. Kona Ice and Chicago Don's Hot Dogs will be available for purchase. And then next Thursday, the 13th, also 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., is another concert at Flagship Park. And it's the top 40 rock covers with the band Crush. Again, don't forget to bring your chairs and blankets, and concessions will be available for purchase. And then we are going to, the first fishing derby was such a success, we're going to repeat that on August 15th, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the Flagship Park Deer Chase entrance. Easton and the Kentucky Fish and Wildlife Department will be on hand to teach you everything you need to know about fishing. You may bring your own rod and reel or borrow one of ours. Don't forget to bring a camping chair or blanket. We have lots of fun giveaways and raffles. Anyone 16 and over will need to have a fishing license. All you do is just let, throw it in and step away, and let them fish. Don't buy a fishing license. Throw it in, step away. And then August 22nd, 6:30 p.m., I need to discuss this with Mr. Bogart. We are having a family campout at Flagship Park, Erlanger residents only. How come the 10 years I was there, I was never allowed to have a campout? I'm just questioning... Okay, just let it go. Okay, I'm letting it go. Okay.
What night is that?
It's going to be 6:30 p.m. on August 22nd. Saturday? Is that a Saturday night? Saturday night, okay. Have you ever wanted to try camping? Yes. Were you allowed? No. But we're going to venture not too far from wilderness. Are you an avid camper but looking for something different? Do you want to have a great time while hanging out with neighbors? Then this event is for you. You will need to bring a tent, camping chairs, and all supplies needed for sleeping outdoors. The city will provide plenty of activities and fun until dark, then you can relax and... activities and fun until dark. Then you can relax and sit by a campfire and enjoy free smores. A continental breakfast will be available in the morning. You must pre-register. Registration by, you must be pre-registered, and registration by August the 14th, or forward your name, address, email, and number to kimwalking@kim.walking@cityoferlangar.com. So the first campout, August 22nd, 6:30. Yes, I won't be there. No, I'm just, and Missy wants to talk about taxes.
It's that time of year again where we set the tax rate. I just did today, received the tangible amount. I had received the real estate assessments and the additions and deletions last week, and I've been kind of waiting on the tangible. Put those together, sent them off to the area development district for them to figure. I will also run calculations on that, and hopefully we'll, we'll match. But I'd like to ask for a committee meeting for the 18th, so we can discuss the tax rate calculations.
All right. Thank you.
And then, there was one other thing I kinda wanna bring up, and I had mentioned this to Mark earlier, that I think there's gonna be several committee meetings on the 18th, so I think we can postpone this. But recently, there was a court ruling on workers' comp, compensation for employees and returning back to work on white duty. And I think we need to discuss this and maybe change our policy. So maybe in September, we can have a meeting or so. Yeah. We don't wanna be here for hours next, on the 18th, so.
All right. Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Andrews. All right, next up, we've got Economic Development and Finance, Mr. Blankenship.
Thank you. Staff is continuing the process of closing fiscal year 2015 and preparing the records for the annual audit. Due to the large number of general ledger adjustments associated with the year-end closing, the June and July financial statements will be available in early September. Staff is also investigating software options for accounting for the city's fixed assets, and they expect to make a decision regarding an asset management program by the end of this month. The training for Steve Bodie and Shannon McCauley is continuing to go well. They're both learning and getting more comfortable with their new duties. Also wanted to announce that we have a new business in Erlanger, which is the Dixie Ice Cream Parlor, located at 4416 Dixie Highway in Erlanger, next to AccuTech Signs. It's owned by Leo and Gene Manning, and they have soft-serve, the hand-dip ice creams, they have shakes and sundaes and so forth, and I think some of them are named after the local high school mascots, so you might wanna stop in and take advantage of that. They have hot dogs and soft pressles and slushies as well, and they say they have plenty of seating inside for couples and families or teams, so please stop by, make use of this new business.
Wonderful. Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Blankenship. Mr. Hahn, have anything to add? All right, All right, then. I think a perk I cut out here. Is next up Finance?
Codes.
Okay, all right. Codes, building, and zoning. Mr. Dunhoff?
Okay, we've got three items we need to talk about. The first one is an update on Smith-Towing, text amendment request to add towing facilities as a conditional use with conditions. If you remember, Smith-Towing came and talked to us, and we had a long discussion with them. We asked them if they went back and talked to Corporex, and they did. And since then, they've had issues. And then the mayor and city staff got together and sat down and talked with both parties, and they've got, they're headed in the right direction right now, but they're not quite there yet. They're still proceeding with meetings. And they requested to address the committee on the September 15th committee meeting night, if needed, to discuss in more detail. And hopefully both parties will come to some kind of agreement, so we're kinda put that in progress right now. The other one was at our July 21st committee meeting. Dave Hahn presented a request to change the zone of a small piece of property on the property that is under contract by CVS that is currently owned by Methodist Church. The request would be to change it from R1F to Neighborhood Commercial NC. This particular property is the drive-through lane for pharmacy pickup. And I think we were all in favor to go ahead and have that done. So tonight, the committee would like to make a motion to have Dave Hahn file the necessary documents with the Kenton County Planning Commission for a map amendment to change the zone from R1F to NC.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
That was just basically putting it back to what it was before we changed it to what it is now, correct?
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, it's the, it's basically a small parcel on the backside of the property. All right, so any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, and that same night, we had, Dave Hahn presented us a request from Camps Pallet to allow outdoor stories provided, if it is screened from view from adjoining property in the right of way. The council members presented, at the committee meeting felt that it was okay for the change provided as screened. We feel that since the IP1 zone is one of our larger industrial zones, we should not open the entire IP1 zone to outdoor stories. But since the IP4 zone debuts this property, and is only, is the only IP4 zone in the city, we should rezone this property as well, as the other corners of Kenton Land Road and Russell McClure Drive to IP4. The IP4 zone allows all the same uses as the IP1 zone, with the exception of towing facilities with outdoor storage. Therefore, the IP4 zone would be the only zone in the city to allow outdoor storage provided as screened, unless otherwise allowed by a specific use in the other zones. And I think we all agreed to go ahead and do that, because it's not gonna be in front, it has to be on the side or back, and it can't be seen. And all they're gonna store is pallets back here. So now, the committee would like to make a motion to have Dave Hahn file the necessary documents with the Kenton County Planning Commission for a map amendment to change zone from IP1 to IP4, and to amend the text. And the IP4 zone to allow outdoor storage provided as screened from view from an adjoining property in the right of way, but the outdoor storage is not permitted to be in the front yard.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And Dave Hahn's in the house.
I thought that Dave was out there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hahn. All right, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda here for progress in revitalization. Mr. Cahill?
Yes, Ms. Hopkins did forward you out her report for the month, and she is here if you have any questions about it. Hopkins, anything you'd like to add?
All right, thank you. All right, so you've heard the reports of our committees. Do I entertain a motion that they are adopted as presented? Motion by Mr. Cahill, second by Ms. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, so next up is our reports of representatives. Are there any reports of representatives this evening? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll move on. Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, actually, I have something to report on that. Thanks, Mark. I had mentioned at the committee meeting about the resolution from the mayor's group meeting. Have you all had a chance to take a look at that resolution? No. This is regarding the sidewalk over the portion along Dixie Highway in Covington. And the mayor's group is seeking, they wanna try to get a, the resolution to be agreed upon by all, all cities. I wanted to bring it in front of our council and get our council to approve it before I go and, and sign the resolution. Any, any comments on the resolution? Can I get a motion that I, that Erlanger signed the resolution?
What's it gonna cost us? Nothing?
No. This is a request, this is a request for the governor.
Type thing, or?
Yeah, it's really just a, it's a request from the mayor's group to Governor Beshear.
For some money.
For some money to.
Oh, yeah.
Long as it don't cost the city, I have no issue.
Need help us with the overpass, will we?
Right. Yeah, we should. That's right, we should turn that back around on Covington for a change.
Something for something. Quid pro quo.
I will bring that up. That's a good point.
Good idea.
All right, so we had a motion from Ms. Kyle, a second by Ms. Skidmore. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, then. The reports of our city operations. Mr. Beaux, do you have anything to report?
Yes, sir. Last meeting, I reported that we have met with the highway department relative to the improvements on Dixie Highway, and, and if you remember, I even told them, told you that I warned them about taking care of our new sidewalk and curbs. Well, since that time, the Public Works Department and myself have met with the highway department and their contractors, two different occasions. First time, we began at the underpass and talked about the improvements that need to be done to the highway at that location, so we don't just cover up some of the figures and the pavement that was put in when the Dixie Highway was electioned in Turnpike, and it was a dirt road, and the, when the highway department took it over, they built the underpass, which was back in the 20s. So the road and pavement there is almost, almost 100 years old. So we did, do they have that meeting? And they determined that they needed to do some more investigation of some of the issues there. So they, then they had a meeting. The second meeting was with the utility companies to meet with all the different utilities that are involved in the Dixie Highway. And a lot of you don't know that, that there are a lot more utilities under the highway than everybody thought about, because the optic fiber, the telephone company manages, is on the Dixie Highway and actually services the airport. If it's damaged, the airport's out of business. There's gas, there's water, regular telephone, and so all those things have to be adjusted. So we did meet with all them, and they're in the process of starting those adjustments to the infrastructure, along with repairs to the pavement. And part of the project, when the highway department does these improvements, as the city does, when they make certain improvements, they have to also put in the pedestrian sidewalk crossings for the handicap intersections. So that's gonna be accomplished by a subcontractor too. So that works is starting. And as Mr. Bogart reported last meeting, they indicated that it will be moving right along beginning this month. Secondly, the Public Works Department has had a need to do some emergency repairs that we didn't anticipate over on Lakemont Drive, so if anybody gets a call, that's what's going on over there. And lastly, you know we're rebuilding or replacing Division Street, which was delayed because the Water District had to replace the water main there that was ancient, and the only location for that water main was under the pavement, which is fine. They installed new water services for all the houses on that street, and we have a contractor, JPS, that's ready to start the work. Well, Mr. Hahn and Mr. Bogart and myself recognize that the city actually owns a piece of property at the corner of Division and Woodward, and it's a piece of property that has some economic benefits to the city, that if we dispose of it in the future, that would need to have all the infrastructure. Well, we did an investigation, determined that the sewer's available to the lots, and all the other utilities are available, except that it'll need one water service, and we didn't wanna have to have the Water District cutting holes in the new pavement to provide that when we decide to dispose the lot. So I requested the Water District investigate installing a water service. They've already contacted Mr. Hahn, and he's been in contact with Mr. Bogart to make sure our contractor is aware that they have to wait till the Water District gets that water service in in that particular location, and we are asking the Water District to make that installation. So there is an expense involved with that, but it'll be picked up when we dispose of the property. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Beaux, did you happen to mention when that work will start on Dixie Highway? What's the anticipated start date for the, for the Dixie Highway repairs?
I didn't understand what you said.
When, when is that work supposed to start on Dixie?
Supposed to start this month, but actually, starting now.
Yeah, 'cause there's signs up on Dixie Highway now.
Yeah, you see all the side streets have signs of.
Okay.
And there's even a detour.
What, what's gonna occur first, though, is gonna be the repairs to the pavement, not the resurfacing. And the utilities are all gonna have to be adjusted, so that'll happen first. And then when they get all that, all those repairs made, the sidewalk, the handicap crossings at the intersections, and the utilities get their utilities adjusted, then they'll come in and mill and resurface. And as I mentioned last time, most of this work's gonna be happening at nighttime, because of the volume of traffic on Dixie Highway, and the fact that, as I said, it was, it used to be a Turnpike, and you go to the highway department, the lanes on Dixie are very narrow. There's only 10-foot lanes, so, and poles on both sides, so it's very difficult for the buses and trucks to get through and pass. And as I mentioned before, for them to manage that traffic through the underpass, well, they close one side, it's gonna be a problem. So they understand all those issues.
All right, wonderful. Mr. Howard?
Mr. Beaux, on that Division Street project, how long will that, how long will that delay that project with the contractors?
It's not gonna delay it at all. They, they asked Mr. Hahn to make the application. They're gonna jump right on it, and the contractor's gonna be able to start on the project right away, but he'll just leave that, that portion of the street available for the utility company to put the water service in.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? All right, then, we'll move on to the city attorney, Mr. Gatlin.
I have nothing to report that hasn't already been discussed.
All right, then we'll move on to the city council attorney, Mr. Wickman.
Thank you, Mayor. I emailed to each of you late this afternoon, our monthly reports and invoices. I hope, sorry they got there late, but we've had some vacations in our office that we're sort of understaffed. The report in regard to the activities of our office in regard to collections and, of delinquent taxes and, and codes enforcement lanes are, was included in that report in regard to some of those items. We'd like to bring them to your attention and get your authorization to initiate foreclosure actions. The first one is property of 3441 Cascade. We've negotiated with that property owner. They've paid substantial amounts of money, but they were supposed to continue payments of $600 a month. Not done that since 2014, and we would like to go ahead and continue with that foreclosure. The second one is at 3410 Cowie Avenue, the property's vacant. Delinquent taxes is, is the issue. Again, we haven't had any success in acquiring cooperation with the property owner. To pay those delinquent taxes, we'd like to initiate a foreclosure action on that. And the final one is Ms. Upton at 3612 Jacqueline Drive. We've been negotiating with the owners of that property for a long time. Again, we've just got to the point where we are not having any success with that, and we'd like to continue with the foreclosure of that action. And then finally, we've got property at 3409 Cowie Avenue. That foreclosure is already pending. We should have a, a hearing before the judge on August 25th to have that property referred to the master commissioner for a judgment and order of sale. It's also property at 811 Stevenson that you're familiar with. Hopefully, that property, again, will be referred to the master commissioner on August 25th for an order to sell that property at public auction. Any other questions about the reports? We'll be glad to answer them. As usual, we'd like the invoices, like a motion from the council to pay the invoices for the month of July.
I have a question.
Got a motion from Mr. Burke?
I have a question.
A question?
The property at 811 Stevenson, you said that that's gonna proceed August 25th?
Won't be auctioned. It'll be referred to the master commissioner to conduct it. That requires an appraisal, publication notices. It'll take.
Okay, so. Okay.
Two or three months to get the property sold after it's referred to him.
Okay. And then, um, what is the process of, um, the people evacuating the property? When will that take place after all this?
That'll take place after the property is sold at public auction and we have a new owner.
Okay.
But it's, unfortunately, that's, that's the process. There's nothing we can do about it.
I understand. Okay.
We're going as quickly as we can.
I know. Thank you very much.
Do we have to do anything, I mean, to tell you to go ahead and foreclose on them other ones? What do we need to do for that?
I'd like to have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for that too.
I, I gotta, I do have a question about that. I guess, are, are we supposed to approve? I mean, that seems like an executive function.
To approve foreclosure? I don't know, that's a good, that's a.
I will have to say that as far as we've ever done this before, either way.
Frank always wants our direction since he is our attorney. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, you're correct. It is an executive decision, but the executive has contracted with our office to proceed, pursue, pursue these actions. I, I don't know if he's comfortable with doing that without the, um, understanding of the city council about what's going on, but, um.
I think, I think, I mean, I feel comfortable with it as long as you're all aware of it as well.
Good.
Yeah, okay. So, we don't necessarily have to vote to proceed with foreclosure?
Let me put it this way, we'll proceed with the foreclosure unless somebody tells me otherwise.
Yeah, sounds good to me, Frank.
Well, good, Frank.
Yeah, that, that's really good. We, we've been having these discussions now for about the past month and we were not sure. There are, there are several different properties that we've been in discussion about and council and/or the executive authority of, of the city has never given direction to the city attorney or now city council attorney to move forward with these. So, that clarification will really help us on this side of us being able to, you know, get with the mayor and, and going right. Because there are several other properties other than the four or five that Mr. Wickman talked about that we're going to have pending very shortly of, of wanting to move forward on. So, that's what we kind of wanted some clarification about and why it was kind of brought up tonight and we had talked about that. How do we do it? Get some guidelines from the council as far as moving forward on those. And there, and there'll be some later on that I think we'll want to have a presentation and we've talked about doing this to get some guidelines because if we have some that are just in fact delinquent taxes without any maybe nuisance or codes violations against those properties, how do we want to handle those? And then what amount do we get to in making forward to go? Because I don't think we've ever been very aggressive as a city going after those kind of things because it does include suing our citizens and getting, getting that back in here. So, that was, that was kind of what we wanted to have that discussion about that too. Thank you.
Do you feel like you have your answer or sort of talk discuss?
Yes, yeah, I think the motion now, you got the one motion to pay before we go forward.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So, we've got the, the August fourth, two thousand and fifteen invoice and the amount of seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents to be approved. We've got a motion and a second. Ms. Kyle, uh, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. The next report is the city administrator, Mr. Fields.
The only other thing I have, uh, to add is I'd like to have the committee meeting on the eighteenth also to reveal.
Oh, for God's sake.
I can hear now because we got a little microphone up here.
I took my thing off.
Didn't work.
I know.
Anyway, a committee meeting for, uh, the eighteenth also to reveal the yearly, year-end report for the operations report that we'd like to present to council, um, for the eighteenth. I know that's a lot on the eighteenth, but.
I can handle it.
Okay. Come prepared.
Well, I was in the hospital, John.
That's the only thing I have.
All right, wonderful. We'll add that to the agenda.
That's a pretty good excuse.
Thank you, Mr. Fields.
Thank you.
You've heard the reports of our representatives and city operations. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Ms. Kyle, second by Mr. Cahill. I was looking that way, sorry. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. All right, correspondence. Ms. Hoffman, do you have any correspondence this evening?
I, I do. Bruce Case posted this on the city's Facebook page. On the twenty-second of July, I was driving a rental car south on Dixie Highway when it stopped running at the intersection of Dixie and Kentonlands Road. Within a few minutes, patrolman Norm Lyle stopped, called airport towing and had the car towed away. All of this happened a full fifteen minutes before the agency responded with the call from AAA. We would like to extend our thanks to the Erlanger Police Department and to Officer Lyle for the prompt professional help you provided.
Great, thank you. All right, so the next thing we have on our agenda is the citizen comments. We've got, um, Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. And then Mr. Winter, I saw he was here and then I think he left. All right. Is there anybody else that'd like to comment? Sir? Yeah, if you would like to, come on up. If you wouldn't mind, just state your name.
I'm TD Durker and I was here maybe a year and a half ago getting started on some sidewalk ideas that we had for our neighborhood off of Nelson Road, which is back in Lakemont. And I just wanted to say, it kind of caught me off guard by recognizing me and I just wanted to say thanks to the folks that really stepped up and helped me kind of figure out what it is we had to do. Rick was great. Uh, Mr. Beox came out to our home, let us know what we needed to do. We rallied the, the neighbors that we have there, explained to them what we were doing. We got them all on board. They were all for it, very excited, but I, you know, I first came to that first meeting, I didn't know what was involved and I just really appreciate the city stepping up and helping us understand what we needed to do as citizens to kind of bring it to your attention and move it forward. And whatever I can do as our family, we own a piece of property there, whatever we can do, uh, to support the process moving forward, we're, we're ready to do. Okay?
All right, wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thanks for the comments.
All right, any other comments? All right. So, we'll move on here to bids. Mrs. Hoffman, Mr. Beox?
I have not, sir.
Are there any bids? No bids tonight? All right. Does anybody have any unfinished business to report? Uh, any new business? Does anybody have any new business to discuss? Sudcamp?
I just wanted to make mention that my dear friend Jim and his wife Nancy celebrated fifty years of marriage this weekend.
Wow, congratulations.
It'll never last. I know them both.
Didn't tell anybody.
Yep, we told everybody now.
Had he did.
Congratulations.
That's awesome.
That's fantastic. Fifty years. If I would've known, I could've put it in my report. All right. So, then, uh, any other, any other new business? Okay, we'll move on to legislation then. Uh, the nuisance ordinance, Mr. Gatlin?
All right, this is on for a second reading. An ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky amending the Erlanger Code of Ordinances, section one oh-six point oh-three, an ordinance twenty-three six-one to remove recreational vehicles, boats and trailers in driveways as a nuisance and to modify the restrictions on storage of waste containers. An ordinance amending the Erlanger Code of Ordinances, section fifty-one oh-two, an ordinance twenty-three twenty-six, deleting provisions regarding the storage of waste containers. In summary, the purpose of this ordinance is to amend sections of the Erlanger Court of Ordinances and other ordinances to allow the parking of any recreational vehicle, boat or trailer in any occupied residential area, in any driveway throughout the year. The ordinance also amends to allow the storage of waste containers to be placed on the curb no sooner than four p.m. of the evening prior to the collection day and then be removed and placed within two feet of the dwelling or garage.
All right, do I entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance? Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All, uh, see, this is a roll call vote.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Motion carried. Our next ordinance is the mayor's termination authority.
This also is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky protecting the tenure and terms of employment of all full-time employees and non-elected officers of the city other than the members of the police and fire departments and repeal of former, of prior ordinances regarding non-elected officials. In summary, the purpose of this ordinance is to ensure safeguards and to protect the tenure and terms of employment of other full-time employees. KRS fifteen point five-two-oh and ninety-five point four-five-oh already protect the tenure and the terms, the employment of the members of the police and fire departments and non-elected officers of the city and thereby restrict the at-well authority of the executive authority and to provide due process for all other full-time employees.
All right. Do I have a, do I entertain a motion? All right, from Mr. Howard and a second, Mr. Blankenship? Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?[1299.33]